I don't have my gavel. So, there we go. It is now 2:05 and I will call this meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education to order. And first of all, we will have the notes, announcement from our interpreter. Is it Steve? Is that who's here today?
We also have Hugo here today.
Steven Hugo. So would you like to make your presentation statement at this time?
Yes, please. This is a bilingual message which will be interpreted into English. Buenas tardes. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea en español. Si quiere escuchar la interpretación tendrá que elegir su idioma. Si está usando una computadora verá un icono en la parte de abajo de su pantalla, a la derecha, en forma de globo que dice "interpretación". Haga clic ahí y seleccione español. Si está usando el app busque el menú de tres puntos arriba, haga clic en "interpretación de idiomas" y elija español. Un pequeño recordatorio a todos que hablen a un paso moderado para que podamos interpretar todo. Good afternoon. In order to provide language access, we'll be providing simultaneous interpretation into Spanish. If you'd like to listen to the interpretation, you'll need to select the language in which you wish to hear it. If you're on a PC or laptop, look for the globe icon on the bottom right that says "interpretation" and select "Spanish". If you're using the Zoom app, locate the three-dot menu on the top right, click on "language interpretation" and then select "Spanish". A quick reminder to everyone to speak at a moderate pace so we can interpret everything. Thank you. Gracias.
Gracias, Steven Hugo.
Gracias.
At this time, Mr. Porter, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I believe we can see the flag in the boardroom.
In the very sparse boardroom, so I would ask everybody to please join me as we salute our nation and our community in this brand-new year. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Porter. And now I will go to Anna. Would you like to do a roll call?
Sure, Mrs. Cardy.
Here.
Mrs. Dany. I see her, I don't hear her, but I see she's here.
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. DeWort.
Here.
Ms. Irman.
Here.
Mrs. Frost.
Here.
Mr. Howell.
Here.
And Mr. Porter.
And present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will ask Dr. Salsito, do we have any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda, or are we good to go?
We are good to go. Thank you.
Great. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I do want to wish you all a very Happy New Year. We're beginning it with some rain, which we know we all need so desperately, and just hope that it doesn't create problems, that it solves problems, which would be nice. And also, I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the Santa Barbara County staff who were able to pivot and pull this hybrid board meeting together today, especially for those of us that travel some distance. I must say, I was a little apprehensive after being on the road yesterday and dealing with the wind that I, I, I have a small car and it was blowing me all over. So the thought of being in that and rain, possible rain, was, was a little bit daunting. So, thank you so very much. And to my fellow board members for being able to pivot and adjust so quickly to a change. So, thank you very much, all of you. Do we have board comments from, let's start with Ms. Dany? Nope, you're muted. There you go.
Good, good afternoon, and I would like to just tag on to your well wishes to everyone for a Happy New Year and in this welcome rain, and hopefully we don't have any catastrophic events evolving from it. This morning, I attended the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association meeting, and we had a great presentation from the Executive Director of the Students for Echo Education and Agriculture. Their focus is to educate students as to where their food comes from. She shared with us that many students don't even know what the word agriculture means. And they're focusing on the third grade level, and their STEM program is through the middle school and high school ages. They've been in Ventura County since 2008. It was a very, very interesting presentation and very much appreciated. And that's about all I have to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Cardy.
Oh, briefly, four days short of the fifth anniversary of the debris flow. Everybody's feeling a little PTSD, but again, just want to thank Dr. Salsito and her team for, in her words, "over-communicating" with schools and districts. I know for a fact with the various emergency response measures we get now between the shrieking telephone calls, text messages, voicemails, it's, it's, it's been a lot, but I think it's, it's, it's welcomed, so we can never, never go back to, to what was five years ago. So, thanks all for putting on that hat and making it just so, so absolutely crystal clear to everyone.
And Ms. DeWort.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone about the CCBE County Board Governance Workshop on March 10th and 11th. It's a two-day event in Sacramento. And registration is for the early bird registration to have a significant discount. It's February 3rd. And for the discounted room block, it's February 16th, if anyone's interested in going. Also, just, I, I'm on the CCBE County Board Governance Initiative Committee, and so we're having monthly meetings, so I'm not going to tell you every month that I had a meeting, so, but I just wanted to let you know that it's going to be throughout the whole year. And we're working on version two of the trustee handbook. And also, I attended with Ms. Dany and Superintendent Salsito, the Santa Barbara Board, County Boards Education Association. And it was a great presentation, like Maggie said, and I just wanted to let everybody know that I was interested because it said it was free. So, they have, they're having 17 field trips for kids throughout the county, and the, the, everything is free, including the bus transportation. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. DeWort. And we are so glad that you are on CCBE, and we will just remember that every, now, if there's something from the meeting you want to report, of course, we'd love to hear that, too. All right. Ms. Irman.
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to report. Just again, just want to thank Susan Salsito and her team for all the communication and like pivot. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Howell, do you have anything this morning, this afternoon?
I'll just repeat all the kudos to the superintendent and staff, and a question that we don't need to answer today to Mr. Payne. I know at the end of each meeting, we have authorization for a Zoom meeting if we need it. In the past, that's always been COVID-driven, and we were just being out of an abundance of caution. Zoom really saved us today, because I think it would have been burdensome, if not impossible, for some to attend. So, my question to Mr. Payne is if, once Governor Newsom suspends the order in place, I, I believe it's February, would we can, would it be possible for us, I'll just propose this for consideration, to routinely adopt a authorization for a Zoom meeting only if we need it, hoping we'd never need it, but avoiding an 11th-hour scramble to try and authorize it. So, it's can we do it? If we can, then there's a decision of if we should do it, it'll be a topic of discussion, but I just think, much to all of our surprise, Zoom made this possible. Without it, we might not have a forum, or we'd have lots of people uncomfortable trying to attend. So, that's it.
Thank you. And Mr. Porter.
And Mr. Howell said, if it weren't for Zoom, I would not have attended today. So, that's a great question. A little bit different slant, I, I would like to thank Dr. Salsito for her leadership. And it wasn't really a time of crisis, but it certainly might have been. And I deeply appreciate special communications when we have an unusual situation occur. So, it takes time to do that, along with everything else going on, but I deeply appreciated that. And then ditto to all the great, the kudos for those who made this happen. It's a lot of work, and we all appreciate it.
Great. Okay, and now we will go, is there, are there any public comments today?
I'm looking, first of all, we haven't received any prior to the meeting, but looking at the communications team, and they're saying no online as well, so no public comments.
Okay, then we will go right into Dr. Salsito's report.
Thank you so much, and Happy New Year to all, and thank you so much for the comments from the board, for the, the team at SBCEO. Lots of pivoting in the last few days for many reasons, so thank you. They're, all of that is heard and so appreciated. All right, so I'll go to the superintendent's report, and I, I'm going to look over to Austin Payne to see if he wants to even say a sentence or two, not a discussion, but just a quick reaction to Mr. Howell's question, just so we can know where we'd be heading in another, at another point. So, maybe we'll do that after I'm finished with my report. Okay, so the report within your board book, I first, as I have before, would love to pause and see if you have any initial questions now on the items that I've provided for you, and then I'll add some additions. Okay, okay, I will go through just a few then in the report. First, the Allen Hancock College Fine Arts Complex, Fine Arts Complex Tour for the County Board of Education. And I know Mrs. Dany has commented on this a couple of times in different meetings. I'd love to give you the floor for just a second, Maggie, but this is a tour that we, that Deborah Hood has facilitated with the President of Allen Hancock College, especially for the County Board of Education, and along with our Cabinet team as well. Maggie, do you want to say a word or two about the complex?
The complex is the second-largest building on the campus. It is state-of-the-art. It is absolutely fabulous. It houses 17 different arts, if you will, departments, including photography, acting, music, dance, all within this one facility. It is a two-story facility. It also can be a venue for events in the community. It was initiated by a grant from, of course, her name is escaping me right now, Deborah, help me out. There was a $10 million bequest from a former, thanks Judy.
Patty Boyd.
Yes, thank you. Patty Boyd, from her estate, there was a $10 million endowment for this specific facility. And then some of the bond funds have also been utilized to bring this to fruition. I can't emphasize enough that, and encourage you enough, if you can't make the February 2nd, there is also one for the general public on the 24th of February that will be at 5 o'clock, and it would be a self-conducted tour. So, I, I can't say enough good things. I'm very excited. The campus is excited, the students are excited. They're moving in, and will be utilizing the facility in the spring term. So, I don't know, what more can I gush about it? It's just fabulous.
I love it. I can feel the gushing. It feels great. President Kevin Walters will be joining, actually leading the tour with Dean Rick Rantz and the Fine Arts Chair, John Hood, who happens to be very closely related to Deborah Hood, possibly even married to her. But, you know, this is an optional tour. We just wanted to maximize the time we have in the North County and see this beautiful, breathtaking facility. So, if you would let Anna Friedland know if you are either thinking of attending, actually, if you can or cannot, that's really helpful for our planning. Deborah, did you have something you'd like to add before we move on to other topics? Thanks so much for coordinating that. No. Okay, can't hear you for some reason. I'm sorry. Not sure what, no. Okay. Still can't hear you. I'm so sorry, Deborah. But if you wanted to put something in the chat, please feel free. We did say in the book that the tour will begin at 12 o'clock. We, we do need to move that up to about 11:45 for parking, for meeting, all of that. So, just a modification there. So, I'll, I'll move on from there, but I'm really excited about it and appreciate all the efforts. Employee Service Awards, we have that in your booklet, Education Spotlight, CCBE Trust Book, we have trustee handbook. We're also ordering that for our cabinet team. Moving forward, so other additional items, then, I wanted to just let the board know that I reached out to Dr. Clara Fineran, who's the incoming superintendent for Lompoc Unified School District. She's at Los Virginas now. Really, she's familiar with our area. She knows many, many colleagues here within Santa Barbara County. She's so excited to begin on January 17th in Lompoc Unified. Dr. Debbie Blow, who's the interim now, has done a phenomenal job in the interim, and so we're looking forward to welcoming Dr. Clara Fineran to Santa Barbara County. And then I wanted to say a welcome back to Debbie Breck, who's online here as a panelist. Debbie Breck, who's our limited-term Associate Superintendent, acting as our interim, while Bill Ridgeway, he's now officially retired, Denise Cora, now officially retired. Debbie Breck has been retired also for exactly six months and maybe one day, and now able to share, work, support us, and is not just doing one job, but handling two jobs for us. Debbie, welcome back. We're so glad to have you with us, and I wanted to, again, reintroduce you to our county board. Thank you. All right. With that, if there are no questions, I'll turn it right back to you, Mrs. Frost.
I don't know if Ellen Barger is on the CBO staff or not. I don't see her name individually.
She is not able to be with us this afternoon.
Well, would you please extend her, our appreciation and recognition of her, for her invitation by State Superintendent Tony Thurman as one of the three expert panelists for the State Learning Recovery Webinar on Mathematics. What a feather in our cap and hers as well, and I just don't want that to get by without mentioning it.
Thank you. I absolutely will. And I wanted to loop back one more time to Austin Payne. I'd mentioned him saying a few words here. We could have the discussion later, of course, with the board, but related to Mr. Howell's question earlier.
Yeah, so the question was, can we continue passing a resolution to have the option to meet virtually? And as you all know, for the last year-plus, we've done it at the end of every board meeting, and it really came in handy today, obviously, to have that in our back pocket. You're correct, the state of emergency is slated to end on February 28th. So, the plan originally is just to pass this one more time at next month's meeting, so that we have it for committees that can meet virtually, things like that. The, the linchpin for the authority to meet virtually is that a state of emergency be in effect. So, for all intents and purposes, the, this ability really sunsets at the end of February. But when you said that, I recall seeing that a state of emergency was declared in some of these counties that have been receiving flooding. So, what I need to double-check, and it's in Government Code 54953, I believe, is whether that state of emergency has to be pandemic or medically-related in some way, or whether it can be related to some kind of natural issues like we're having today. So, I'll double-check that. If there is any ability to continue passing a resolution to have this ability, I know, I know it was critical today, but I will work with the staff and will have that on the agenda if it's an option.
Thank you very much, Austin. I appreciate that very much. It certainly is nice to be able to pivot like that when we need to. Okay, then, no further comments on superintendent's report. Mr. Michelle, I'll get it out in a minute.
Thank you. Susan, I thank you for your report. On page three, the last page, you, there's a paragraph on community schools planning grants. And I was interested in knowing which districts who qualify for this $200,000 grant.
You bet. Yeah, the $200,000 grant is an initial phase. It's a phase one, I'll call it, of being able to plan, using the $200,000 to plan. And then there are subsequent phases once you receive that planning grant. So, in Cohort One in Santa Barbara County, those who already received it include Guadalupe, Lompoc, and Cuayma. So, they've already received it, are planning, and our team under both Educational Services and Curriculum Instruction is a team who are supporting the planning process with the three districts. So, in answer to your question of who then is qualified for Cohort Two, I will read the list. I have the list in front of me, so I'll just read it out, but let me know if you needed more detail. Santa Maria Joint Union, Santa Maria Bonita, Buellton College, Santa Barbara Unified, Orchid, as well as SBCEO Fitzgerald. So, we've applied as well. Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we will move on to the Consent Agenda, which is published in your board book. You should have all had a chance to read over the minutes and the registration of credentials, the acceptance of donations, and the declaration of surplus. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So, move.
Second. All right, any discussion? No? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have a couple of action items. We have the recommendation, the recommended approval of potential funding from the Department of Social Services for Early Childcare and Education Program. Dr. Salsito, did you want to add any comments to that action item?
Thank you. We have ECE team online here as panelists to answer any questions, by the way, for action item number 13, as well as your information item at the very end on early childhood education. In fact, we might want to expand that just a little bit. But Bridget, let me hand it over to you and see if you have anything further you'd like to add to the narrative on number 13.
Just, just to clarify, this is funding that would be used to support infant and toddler programs. And correct me if I'm wrong, Janelle, but I believe this is the first time that we have applied for this particular funding to support the full-day, full-year infant and toddler programs that we're operating. Is that accurate, Janelle?
So, we currently hold a contract for infant toddlers, but it is, only supports one classroom. This would allow us to support another two classrooms, and the data that we're seeing county-wide through our LPC, every five years they do a needs assessment, shows that we are in desperate need of infant toddler spaces. So, this is just going to possibly give us that opportunity if we receive the funding and then find space for that funding to be utilized.
And LPC is Local Planning Council, so thanks, Janelle, for all of that, everybody.
Do I have any questions for Bridget, or any comments on action item 13? May I have a motion?
So, move. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now we have a recommendation for the... Oh, yeah, the state of emergency. We have, speaking of state emergencies, we have one more month under the state of emergency based on the COVID-19. And this then would go through, I think, through February 28th, and then it would end. Like, right now, I can't find the date, but, but I think that's what I understood. So, that if we need it, we can use it for one more month if we approve it, and this is a roll call vote. So, Anna, would you like to do the roll call?
I'll move.
Oh.
I'll second.
Now we can vote.
Okay, Mrs. Cardy.
Aye.
Mrs. Dany.
Yes.
Mrs. DeWort.
Aye.
Ms. Irman.
Aye.
Mrs. Frost.
Aye.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Mr. Porter.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Excellent. And now we have three information items, the standard personnel report for certified and classified personnel, the Williams-Falenzuela Uniform Complaints Quarterly Report, and the Early Childhood Education Needs Survey Results. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Any further discussion wanted on any of those items? I would like to ask Bridget, what, what was your, what were a couple of your takeaways from that that maybe were unexpected?
I'm actually going to turn that over, Judy, if you don't mind. Mrs. Frost, Christian Patterson, and Janelle Willis, as they've been leading this work and provided this some survey out to our local childcare centers. And so, Janelle and Christian, if you wouldn't mind responding to Judy's question, that would be great. Thank you.
So, Judy, as you asked, what was kind of unexpected? There was nothing that we found in this that was unexpected. The reason we actually completed this survey was because we were having a lot of reports of short staff and how that's affecting the centers and their ability to serve children. And what was happening is we are getting a lot of questions at the state level from like legislators through Every Child California and other bigger agencies, basically asking clarifying questions, saying, well, how come state and federal programs are receiving all this funding, but they're not serving as many children? And so, this was one way to give them some data and some real clean information about some changes that are occurring based on a variety of very complicated issues, and how it is affecting us in Santa Barbara County. And we are openly sharing this survey with other counties and encouraging them to, and not just us as Santa Barbara County, but other, like Every Child California, which is one of the agencies that we work very closely with. But we're encouraging other people to get the same type of data, so that the legislators and the state understand what's really happening versus just hearing, there's a problem, there's a problem. They need that data and understand what that means and how that's affecting not only the centers, but even things like Alternative Payment Program, which we run, that receives funding to support children getting care. We have multiple families in our, in our, especially our southern We have multiple families in our, in our, especially our southern region, who qualify to get funded for childcare, but they can't find a place to have their child served. So it's a very complicated issue. Nothing that we were surprised to see. I think before, the, the reason we did the survey and I think a surprise was we were expecting to see this maybe in another year, but it really hit us faster than we were anticipating. Christian, would you like to add anything to that?
I think you hit most of the major points. I would say just to elaborate on what Janelle said, it is a very historical and circumstantial issue that everyone is now being affected by. And we really just completed this to bring awareness by providing the data in a way that was more of a local story to make it more of a tangible good. And we did provide this to all of the county offices across the state so that they could hopefully complete this for their own county as well.
That's excellent. Oh, Mary Beth?
The meeting that I attended just prior to this was for the Santa Barbara Foundation Roundtable. And the topic was early childhood care. The Board of Supervisors asked first five, the commission to study and first five use some of the data that came from the Santa Barbara County Ed Office. But on top of that, the city manager from Galita and the city of Santa Barbara commissioned United Way to conduct an additional survey. So you can see that this is an environment where the issue of unmet need is been elevated. And as you said, not a lot of surprises, but I think it brings the, you know, the, the critical issue forward that there are indeed business impacts, economic impacts, as well as the impacts to families when they cannot receive, they cannot find, they cannot access, or they cannot afford high-quality childcare. And of course, infant and toddlers have the greatest need. So it was great news knowing that we're in the running for that grant. And my fingers are crossed that we receive it because that is an issue we're seeing. I'm on the board of the Crackery of Children's Project and we're opening one class and the, the need is just so great and the obstacles are even greater. Thank you for this really, really well-done infographic.
Yes.
That with our Foundation Roundtable team.
Uh, Mr. Porter?
Yes, so I mean, this is obviously challenging, but a, a bit of a silver lining. Some of the early childhood staff wound up just going to be hired to teach in some of the new TK programs. So actually, what we wound up getting is being able to hire TK teachers who were well-qualified and well-versed in what they were doing. I know that was a big worry on where all those teachers were going to come from. So that's the good news. The bad news that left holes in this program. But anyway, for TK, it was good news. Thanks.
Well, I greatly appreciate the further information and sometimes, Janelle and Christian, the, the backstory is what's important. We get the anecdotes and the anecdotal information, but it oftentimes isn't that simple. Well, it's never that simple. There's always multiple facets to it and it's really helpful to have those pointed out and for our team to be the one, the Santa Barbara County Board of County Education Office to be the leaders in getting to the bottom of that is really good news. And I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, any further? Ah, Mr. Howell?
Looking at this and I, the report is great and I, the, the graphics is, is great to be able to see all of it. It reminds me, I believe it was the last meeting, Bridget Boblis reported, reported on Welcome Every Baby
Yes.
the expense and the, the anticipated elimination if there weren't a funding source. And I just, I think of how we talked about Allen Hancock and that incredible program for college students. SB CEO affects so many kids, but that program is so foundational. And I'm ju, I'm wondering if there's an update or no one has a magic wand to fund it, but I'm just, I'm curious where it stands. So it's sort of out of order. I apologize, but I was reminded.
That's quite all right. She's here. Let's get the latest.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. I do not have an update for you today. We are anticipating having clear guidance by the beginning of February. So I should have something I could have reported back at the February meeting, if you would like at that point. But today I do not have any news to speak of.
Well, that's an update in and of itself. And we'll look forward to seeing something at the beginning of February, then whatever you're able to add. Okay, any other comments? Moving on then, 18 future agenda items. Anything come to mind? I think we've already added a couple of things with information about the emergency request and about the status of Welcome Every Baby and all that. So we're, we're putting that together as we go.
Mrs. Frost, this is Susan, if I could interject just
Of course.
You could see me on the Zoom, so. I wanted to say while Christian Patterson's here, Janelle Willis are, are both here for ECE and the Early Planning Council, that we're hoping to invite them back and talk about some of the work more comprehensively. This was a information item on a report, which is one piece of a pie. But to give a, a different scope and angle around what the, the Planning Council does in Santa Barbara County, some of the ways in which they, our SB CEO interacts countywide. So we'll, we'll see them again in an upcoming board meeting.
Well, I would look forward to that. So see, another future agenda item has been kicked off. All right. Yes.
Yes. I actually do have a, a question. It's, it's from a presentation that we had a few months ago about the youth, youth rights initiative for Juvenile Justice Center. And just wondering if, I know it's only been a few months since we had that presentation, but I would be really interested in any updates on how that initiative is moving forward and the juvenile justice system, and then how that relates to the voice camp closure. Just any updates on, on any of that would be great.
I think that's me again. Is that something that we're, you want right now? Is that all right?
Either if you have it now or in our next meeting.
The next, I think the next meeting will agendize that and bring that forward to the board. If that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Excellent. Well, it shows the board is certainly paying attention when they want updates on prior presentations. So that's, that should make everyone feel very connected and very good with the work that we're all doing. All right, if I have no other hands up, no other comments, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to adjourn.
I'll second.
You just want to hang out here this afternoon?
I'll second.
Too funny. Okay, any discussion? We could have some warm beverages brought in. I think we just stay right here. All right, all those in favor of adjournment?
I.
Okay, and opposed? All right, motion passes. Our next regular meeting will be February 2nd at the SB CEO North County Office in Santa Maria. And it will be preceded, be preceded by the tour of the Fine Arts Building on Allen Hancock College Campus for which we all need to RSVP, yea or nay, to Anna so that she can plan. And we're moving the time up on that to 11:45 and we'll get information on parking and where to meet. Because you could say Allen Hancock College, but you kind of need a little bit more clarification of where. Okay, and I think we're done.